Good evening. Welcome to the January 18th, 2022 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is public participation. There is no public in this room with us at this time, so I will go ahead and turn it over to Shannon for any public participation we have via email.
We have three. So we will start with an order of receipt. From Matt Clement from Patton Road, Dear School Board Members, as you know, the numbers of positive COVID are rising with the Omicron variant and the hospitals are being overwhelmed with patients. That is the reason we started the remote school and masking in the beginning, to lower the curve and reduce the burden on the ER and ICUs. We are now seeing that play out even worse than last year. I see that several Merrimack schools are over 5% and have been required to use masks and to try to reduce the spread. My own kids have both had emails that someone in each of their classes had tested positive and exposed my child. My kids have told me that several students in their classes have opted out, so this makes me nervous. I think we should continue to require masks while school is over 5% and not cave to pressure that, quote, "the pandemic is over." It is not over, and to stop attempting to prevent the spread only serves to further strain our hospitals and healthcare system. Do not roll back the measures put in place, and if anything, strengthen them to protect our children. I also did support the idea of hooking up the video system in the classrooms so that children remote with COVID or absent could still at least watch the lessons. I get that to try and teach both would be hard, but I don't think we're asking for that, but rather to simply turn on the camera and let it stream or record the normal lesson. That should not be much more effort. Not every lesson will work well, but we, at least there might be some value in watching it and not falling further behind. We owe it to our kids to do whatever it takes to ensure their success. We invested in the technology, and we are foolish to not use it to any degree we can. Thank you, Matt Clement. Next is Lindsay Tebow, Pleasant Street. I wanted to start by saying, I know this subject is tiring to continue. I'm tired. I know all of you are tired, but I will never be tired enough to not fight for my kids. Honestly, I just want you guys to be able to focus on the education of our kids, something that has been put on the back burner for two years, and to then allow us as parents to now decide how to best protect our children. During one of the meetings in November, when the 5% rule was implemented regarding masking, it was brought up by the end of January slash early February, all kids five and up will have had the chance to be fully vaccinated. The school board then discussed at that point that, that at that point, the masks should go to optional from there on out. I am asking for that to be put on the table and voted on. The CDC has even updated their guidance to say that cloth masks are ineffective. So why are we continuing the charade at our kids' expense? When is our end date? When can you all refocus your attention on education? We have the tools we need to move forward. There is no reason why it should be treated differently than the flu. The flu is actually more detrimental to children, yet has no mandate surrounding it. I could have one child home with the flu while my other child can go to school. I could have one child home with COVID, and my perfectly healthy other child is being forced to stay home and not receive an education. This has to stop. I understand following the guidance of DHHS or the CDC, but at some point, I think it's important to use our own brains and decide whether some of these rules just don't make sense. To allow a vaccinated child to go to school with COVID in their household and force an unvaccinated child to stay home is literally mind-boggling to me. Both can get COVID and spread COVID, so why on earth are we treating them any differently? Dr. Fauci said, and I quote, "What we learned that's new is that when you look at the level of virus in the nasopharynx of people who are vaccinated, it's really quite high and equivalent to the level of virus in the nasopharynx of unvaccinated people who are also infected." So again, I ask, why are we separating vaccinated versus unvaccinated? Why are we treating healthy kids like unhealthy kids? Why are we keeping kids out of school and parents home away from their jobs and unable to provide for their families? When are we going to stop sacrificing so much for this one virus? Education, mental health, social activities, sports, jobs, family. At what point do we allow parents to make judgments just as we would for any other illness? Our educators, nurses, and administrators are spending way too much time away from what they're meant to do, be doing, focusing on something that is a job of a parent. We need to refocus. Test scores are plummeting. Children are struggling. My daughter, who already had COVID, is being forced to wear a mask and feel like she's suffocating all day when her mask is doing absolutely nothing for her or anyone else because she has natural immunity. It's a facade just to make people feel safer when in reality they're not in fact safer. When are we going to recognize natural immunity and encourage healthy living versus suppressing our immune systems further with these masks? I am asking again for some things to be reconsidered here. This morning, my five-year-old, who is dealing with anxiety, was crying at the bus stop. Do you know what I had to do? Put a mask on her face. Something needs to change. Lindsay Tebow. Next is Sheena DeBork, Belmont Drive. And thank you for the phonetics. I think I said Sheena last time. So, good evening. I'm writing tonight to ask, what data you used when you created the current mask policy? Two weeks seems like an extremely arbitrary number, which only continues to hurt our children. As of today, the high school has been well under 5% for six days. JMU's six days, TFS six days, and Matricola Elementary, eight days. Is it really necessary to continue to force innocent children to wear a mask for hours a day against the wishes of parents? What power gives you the right to force my child to wear a medical device regardless of whether it's in the halls or in the classrooms? When do you decide to use that power to force other medical devices on my child? Where is the off-ramp with masks and quarantining? How does it make any sense to quarantine a child who is not vaccinated if exposed to a household contact, but not a child who is, quote, "up to date with vaccination"? It is well-known that someone who is vaccinated can still catch and spread COVID-19. Even getting a booster has little or no effect on catching and therefore spreading COVID, especially Omicron. If you cared so much about the spread of COVID, you would continue to quarantine everyone who is exposed to a household contact. But it seems we are just continuing on the course of making illogical decisions. Kids can take their masks off to eat when they are sitting with each other for a period of time, but not passing each other in the hallway. Again, it just doesn't make sense. But why don't we continue with the virtue signaling to make people feel better? Also, how does it make sense to require residents to wear masks inside the high school for the school board meeting when we can opt our children out of wearing them while inside the high school? Again, arbitrary rules. Thank you all for your time, and I look forward to your answers regarding the data that led to the mask policy. And finally, Sarah Locke, Coda Road. I would love to assume the data speaks for itself, but unfortunately, I'm well aware that the presence at this evening's meeting will be loud, present, alternative facts, and make the same data-averse statements as we have all heard at meetings past. The state is averaging 2,700 new cases of COVID daily. Test positivity in New Hampshire is now 22.2%, more than a 10% increase over the worst peak previously. All of our schools have teetered on the 5% threshold since Christmas break, and four of, out of six are currently under mask mandates. Our hospitals are strained, and healthcare providers are very literally begging us to help them help us because they're running out of both hands and beds. These are facts that are not open to interpretation or opinion. It is inexcusable to argue in favor of any action that would contribute to worsening this crisis. At minimum, our current plans for targeted mandatory masking need to stay in place. To do better, the opt-out at all schools should be revoked for a minimum period until this crisis subsides. Sarah Locke. We are caught up.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to number three, recognitions. Are there any recognitions? Okay. Number four, informational updates. The superintendent update?
Excuse me, just a couple of brief things. A while back, we were meeting as part of our weekly Central Office Core Leadership Group. We meet each Tuesday, and we were talking about how to appropriately recognize some of the great things that are going on in the school system. And the team came up with the idea of a website where parents and others could draft some statements in support and of a positive nature about the staff. And I'm pleased to say right now, we have over 50 comments, and very positive comments, from, from parents and community members about certain members of our staff. And so, I want to thank Melissa Fazlak for putting that together, and thank Kim and Matt for the discussion that brought us to this point, because we want to make sure that we create as much of a positive culture as possible, and always supportive of the staff, always connecting with the staff. And this has been a great vehicle for that to happen between the community and the teachers and the paraprofessionals and other support staff, because everyone matters in the school system. So, I'll be bringing you some more news in that regard in the, in the future. Just very, very briefly, I want to give you just a quick snapshot of some of the things that we're working on right now and will continue to work on for the remainder of this school year. As you know, we made a proposal for a vision process. Kim is going to talk to you about that shortly. She's done an excellent job in terms of retooling this school system's process of visioning, which will lead ultimately to a strategic plan, which is of great importance to us. We have a school safety committee. We just met again this morning in terms of redrafting the crisis management plan and relooking at our processes and procedures. We are having, at the present time, our student handbooks reviewed by legal counsel to make sure they're in compliance with any federal and state statutes, because as you know, that, the student handbook is kind of the rules of the road for students in, in attendance each, each day. We have been looking at administrative evaluation instruments, and we've been meeting with a subcommittee that was formed a couple of years ago to review some, a draft of an administrative evaluation document. We are looking at a review of student discipline policy. We had a meeting with our Labor Council and our General Civil Rights Council a while back. A student discipline policy has been suggested that is in compliance with the new student discipline law, and so we're going to bring that forward shortly. We're looking at job descriptions in terms of updating existing job descriptions, creating job descriptions where we don't necessarily have them, making sure they're in compliance with ADA requirements. And so that will take a little bit of time also. And we're looking right now at the school calendar. We have a meeting coming up in the next week to draft the school calendar. I participated in a meeting today of regional superintendents, looking at how we could perhaps coordinate our calendars to be more consistent with the calendars in, with the CTE calendar, so that no student misses school in the career technical education arena. And so, there's a lot going on. It's very exciting work, and we have lots of people, lots of our administrators, lots of our staff engaged in these activities. And so, great things are continuing to happen, and I congratulate everybody for all the work. And that is it for tonight.
Any questions, comments? I just wanted to say thank you, because that is, that is a lot of really hard work and really important work that is definitely needed by this district. So, I just want to say wow, and I echo the thanks that you're, that you've stated to all of the folks behind the scenes, working in, getting some of these things up to date or formed. So, that's, it's just good infrastructure, I think, for our district, and that's a lot of work. So, thank you.
Because we've got a great leadership team, great staff, and there's a lot of energy in the school system.
Great. Next is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start off by responding to a conversation that took place at our last school board meeting whereby there was concern around students readiness for the midterms. And so, the leadership team met, and then we had the building leadership team meet at the high school, and, and then we met with the building leadership team, and they have a very comprehensive outline for parents, students, and teachers about what the teacher will do when a student has missed a lot of schooling, what the student needs to do, and what the parent needs to do. And I felt very comfortable with that list. It does go home to a family once the, a student has, is deemed absent for a certain number of days or is deemed in quarantine. And just some of those things include that the interventions that teachers are available to Zoom with students. They Zoom with them after school or during their prep period. They have their Canvas pages updated, and the part of the responsibility on the students' part is to make sure that they're going on to the Canvas page. They email the students regularly. They're offering extra help before, after school. And they also are waiving the expectation that students take the midterm if they're not ready due to absences, and they will get an incomplete and have the rest of this, as much time as they need to get caught up. And they're offering those study periods for students when they do need to get caught up. So I would say that it was a very comprehensive list, and that we were very satisfied with it. I will publish it to the website so that it's available to all parents, as opposed to just parents whose children's are in quarantine. So I wanted to share that. And just one more thing to add to the list of updates at Central Office is that we're looking at some software for housing our curriculum and for updating and doing revisions with our curriculum using the understanding by design model. And we've had a lot of meetings with various, well, with two different corporations in particular, who might offer this software. We're really excited about that, because right now, having all of the revisions, it's hard to get committee members together, number one, and number two, there isn't a management system for it. That being said, all of our revisions would be our own. They would not be somebody else's revisions. So I just wanted to add that to the list of things that we're working on right now. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Again, more good work. Thank you. I would just ask, and I'm sure you probably meant it anyways, is just to push the list out on Facebook as well, that you'll put on the website.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you. And then Assistant Superintendent for Business Update.
I wasn't going to have one, but I figured since Kim mentioned something, and she told me to be quiet this evening, I figured I'd say, I'm sorry. I'm just kidding around. But the curriculum, the automation and publication of our curriculum online with the products we're looking at is really going to be, I don't want to say a giant step, but a major step forward in getting things out, getting things out to the public and the staff and everything like that. So I, I commend Kim for, for taking that leap and going from the binders sitting in Central Office to going something that's going to be online and usable for teachers, for staff, for students, for parents. So, kudos.
Great. Comments, questions? More good stuff. Thank you. I do not have an update. So item number five, Student Representative Update.
I just have a quick update for tonight. The high school juniors are having a fundraiser with Chipotle next week. It's being held on Tuesday night, which is the 25th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And all you need to do is put in a code when ordering on the app, or when ordering in-store. We have a flyer that's currently up on the Class of 2023 Facebook page. And once again, it's on Tuesday, January 25th, at the Bedford Chipotle.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, we will move on to old business. So, item number five on our agenda, and then a subitem under that would be the Health and Safety Task Force update.
Well, we can perhaps combine one and two under that. Just some quick figures. The antigen and PCR test positivity rate over seven days for Merrimack is 32%, which is about 10 times what it was several months ago. On a positive note, though, I will say that all of our schools are now under the 5% factor, the 5% benchmark. Now, I've had several conversations, very, very enjoyable and very respectful conversations with parents who have asked, why can't we, once it's under 5%, go back to the optional masking, opt-out masking? And my answer to them is that two or three days does not constitute, you know, a valid trend. That we, you know, we said we would look at it over two weeks. I know last year, in some communities, many communities in Massachusetts, they used three and four weeks to establish a trend. Here, we've said, let's, let's do two. And so, some of the schools next week will be approaching their second week. The fact that we're under 5% is quite a testimonial to the effort that parents have been putting into keeping the kids safe and keeping our staff safe. Remember, this is all about keeping children in school, keeping staff healthy enough to come to work for in-person learning. And so, I want to congratulate everyone for really doing their part, because, you know, the community is increasing in terms of its level of transmission. But the news is fairly positive in our school system in the respect that we're not up to 6, 7, 8, 9, 10% of our population testing positive. So, I want to commend everybody, parents, staff, the students, for, for doing their part in keeping our environment as, as safe as possible.
Thank you. The next item is the Board's response to the COVID data and recommendation. Did you have a recommendation that you're bringing to the Board? Would it be to stay consistent with our current policy and protocols?
Yes. My, my recommendation certainly is to remain consistent for the upcoming month, for the month of February. It seems to be working. And yes, we do have a number of cases, but I can't say it's any worse than any other school system at this point in time. So that I will make that recommendation that we continue with our current policy of the, of opting out, but with the revision that we made back in November of any school that reaches the point of 5% or more of the total number of occupants, we go to mandatory masking until there is a two-week consecutive period of under 5%, and then we go back to the opt-out policy.
So Board, any questions, comments? I think we do need a motion at some point to, just to confirm our, the recommendation or whatever our response is. Lori Peters?
Well, I'll make the motion that we continue with our policy as is for another month.
And I saw a second by Jenna. All those in favor? Does anyone want to speak to that, first of all?
Yes. I would like to speak to that, because I was one of the people in November who talked about, hopefully, when everyone had their two vaccinations, we could go to a more lenient mask policy. But in November, when we had that conversation, we had 146 active cases in Merrimack. Today, we have 416. While I want to get where we can go back to straight-up mask optional, we're right in the middle of this Omicron, and it looks like, according to all the experts, we're going to peak out here towards the end of January, beginning of February. We should start seeing a decreasing trend. But right now, that's not the time to make that decision, and that's why I made the motion to continue with our policy as is for another month.
Thank you so much for that. Any other comments or questions? Shannon?
I would just weigh in on what Lori's saying, and honestly, you know, we need to, I, I see these letters, and I feel that there are promises being made. I think what we say is our, our best hope is. It's not what our intention is. Our intention is to follow the data and do what's best based on the data that we have at the time that we have to vote at every given, at any given time when it comes to this. This is a moving target, and they keep changing the color of the bull's eye. I'll be honest with you. So, so with that, you know, I, I want to make clear to the community that we are not promising that once vaccines are, are available to everyone that, it, it's all about, you know, what's the exposure? And I think that's very important. I think that, I'm glad you did say that. But I don't, I feel like a lot of these letters that we're getting from the community say that we promised we would do X, Y, and Z at, at a certain date, and we will do what the data tells us to do when we are asked to make a decision at, at any given meeting. So, and I think that's on any issue, but this one just keeps coming up. But on that note, yeah, I think that we have to just be clear about our intentions.
Any other comments?
I would just say that I agree. I mean, this is not the time, in my opinion, you know, to be, I mean, to be, not be as vigilant as we could be while we're right in the middle of a storm, really, in the time of year that it would be expected that it would be, the rates would be the highest post-holidays in the winter, you know, less outside air. So I, you know, remain focused on keeping kids in school, because to be in a spot where we have to close down, and there are some communities around us that have had to do that, I just feel it's a top objective to keep kids in school, and then, on the same vein, keep our staff and students safe. So, all right, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. That's 5-0-0. Thank you.
May I just say, on behalf of the excellent members of the Health and Safety Task Force, thank you for the support.
Yep, no problem. Moving on to number three under number five, maybe, maybe we want to label these like A, B, and C or something. But number three is the proposal for visioning the task force's next steps. Kim Yerlot?
Thank you very much. A few Board's meetings back, I presented a PowerPoint with the notion that, and the interest on the part of the Board for us to get some visioning done for our district, and that visioning is part of visioning the, the portrait of a learner. How do we have a portrait of a learner that will guide all educators and guide students and parents? And how do we start the process for developing a strategic plan? So, the purpose of, of this community visioning process is to engage with a broad range of stakeholders in Merrimack to develop a common understanding of the vision for learning for the Merrimack schools, the values, priorities, opportunities, and challenges. Throughout the process, we will engage many different groups of community members in a variety of formats, including students, parents, teachers, administrators, school board members, and other community members. This work will support district and school staff to plan for the future and lay the foundation for launching a strategic planning process. And I presented in that PowerPoint three phases. The first phase being doing some research and making sure that we have the persons on the task force up to date with, with common trends, in that we conduct focus groups and do some surveys, gather the information that we would need to start the process. The second part would be to be working on the vision and develop a collective vision for learners in the schools in the Merrimack community that has accompanying documents and materials that would outline that vision. And that timeline is roughly based from April to June of 2022, with the hope end date of September, October 2022, where we have articulated the vision of a learner. We have a vision statement for the district, and we have the skeletons for the start of a strategic plan. At that time that I did the presentation, I, my recommendation was to hire a facilitator to work with this group. And I'm putting forth Bill Wilmot's name as a potential facilitator. This is not a consultant role. This is a, literally a facilitator that will work with the group to help us go where we want to go. And that, whatever the product is, reflects the community's wants and needs. So, on the, this document here, I have presented a, kind of a profile of Bill Wilmot. As you know, he works with the schools, helping to implement UDL, Understanding Universal Design for Learning, and he works for CAST with the Hampshire DOE, very impartial facilitator, working at all six schools at this time, and has a very rigorous and commendable resume portfolio. So I'm looking for the Board's permission to start this process, hopefully by the end of January, having our team established and going forward from there, and for your endorsement of having Bill Wilmot be the consult, not the consultant, the facilitator in this process.
Comments? Shannon?
In your Phase One, which I think, of course, first things first, I'm sure we'll get updates as time goes on, but I'm seeing conduct focus groups and then engage community members. So, is there going to be a committee, committee, or is this just going to be done with? Or is this just going to be done with data, I guess, and like more of an interview process? Because a focus group, to me, is just get together once, not like a recurring thing. Am I getting that right?
My proposal was that we put to forth a task force with two school board members. And then I already have six parents from, one from each building, who have stepped forward and said they'd be interesting, interested. And then we would have probably four administrators and then some district leadership team members and a couple of community members. And that task force will be either meeting monthly via Zoom or in person, or reporting out, be given tasks and be reporting out monthly. So it roughly is, you know, eight-month commitment. With what we would hire Bill for is three hours a month of meeting. You know, we would have work sessions from like four to seven or three to six with the task force.
Okay.
Lori?
So I think this is really good work. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can tie it into our NIASC work because so much of NIASC is related on, you know, parents and the community and students. So I fairly feel like the timing of this, if we can align everything, is going to make our future work as we, you know, move towards reaccreditation and creating, if we are going to create a new mission statement, or what does our mission statement look like? And do we want, you know, to get all of these people on board so we can start doing that work, I think is excellent and it's being proactive.
Kim?
Thank you, Lori. That's really, really good feedback. And what had happened, when I assumed this role, I had noticed that we didn't have a vision of a graduate district-wide. And yet, at the high school, they had been working for years on a vision for a high school graduate. So upon your senior year, this is what we're looking for, exiting skills. So we kind of grappled for a bit about, really, a vision of a graduate should be pre-K through 12. And it should be those skill sets that you're looking to develop in students all along. So as we grappled with this, we decided that this committee would do a vision of a learner, pre-K through 12. And then it will be married to a vision of a graduate that's specific to a high school graduating senior. And that each of the schools will have their individual kind of a value statement. And we'd have an overarching mission statement for the district.
Shannon?
It's off of kind of an earlier comment I made a prior presentation. But are we using our district parent group or are we actually engaging that group again? Or how did the parents get selected?
It's been challenging to get that group together because it's been very fluid. There are people who have stepped down and people who are newly stepped in. And there's also positions that aren't filled. So when I asked for a parent, I asked each of the principals to go to their parent group. And if there wasn't anyone there to seek out a person who they would consider who would want to be actively involved in work such as this. So everyone put forth a name. Some of them are part of that parent faculty group and some are not. And again, there are some that there's just, there's holes in representatives. For example, Reed's Ferry School doesn't have a board member-at-large. And that group was made up of a board member-at-large.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Jenna?
Will the task force involve students too? I think that was one that you didn't list, but it's written, I think it's written here, but maybe I'm misreading it.
It might be a survey or an interview of students, but I wouldn't be asking students to attend those sessions.
Okay, okay.
Again, I want to make sure that this is overarching pre-K through 12.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for that update.
Since this is a proposal, do we need to accept it at this point? Would that make sense?
Do you want an acceptance of it?
An acceptance would allow for me to go ahead and put forward a contract for Bill.
Sure.
I wouldn't do that without a board vote.
Okay.
So I'd be glad to move that we accept the proposal for the Visioning Task Force as presented?
Do I have a second? Lori Peters? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's 5-0-0. Thank you. Yes, excellent job. Onto new business, item number six. There's number one under that item, which is substitute pay rates. So Bill Olson.
Yes, periodically, school systems review their degree of competitiveness with respect to compensation for day-to-day subs and for long-term subs to make sure that we do remain competitive and attract people. I've seen it for many years that when a school system falls behind in terms of compensation for day-to-day or long-term subs, that people tend to gravitate towards other school districts. So we want to maintain as much competitiveness in our salaries as possible. And so in talking with Melissa Fazlick, we'd like to make a small adjustment of about, for the most part, either a dollar a day for some of the support staff, for $10 a day for day-to-day subs for a full day. Nurses are a little bit harder to find and it's more, much more competitive. We'd like to make a $25 adjustment there. And so in talking with Melissa, I believe we have had a surplus in our substitute account over the last couple of years. I believe the budget can support this. And I think it's a positive step in terms of maintaining our ability to attract day-to-day and long-term substitutes, particularly in the teaching staff, also the nurses that are very important in terms of staffing our schools, but also maintaining our competitiveness with our support staff also. So Melissa has done a survey of the salaries in area schools. We have come up with the proposal that you see here. In terms of anticipated, it's always difficult to come up with a precise estimate of what this may cost. But it may be, it may be, in my estimate, probably another $30,000, which I think our budget can absorb, given the fact that we have had a degree of surplus in that account over the last two or three years in particular.
Shannon and then Jenna?
The one, I had a couple, I would say glaring numbers. And one is the daily teacher rate. So we're looking to just be, we're going to be barely on, basically on par with the majority if we go to 110, which is the proposed. Amherst is one town over and is going 150. So I would lean toward 125 as a rate for that because that lets me above, we don't have to be at the top, but we want to be above what I would call average market rate or else we're competing in the same pool with no competitive advantage. Right now, we're at, you know, I would say, we're even with some, a couple bucks below others. But I think we need to be, have a bit of an edge right now. And I'm not saying we want to go all the way to the 150 Amherst pays. And I would prorate that for half-day, doing the same, the half-price. So was it 7750 or whatever, the half-price of 125 is? Because I'm not doing the math on camera because it's embarrassing. The other, the other thing I was looking at was with, actually, I'm losing it right now, I can't find it. Well, we're definitely above Nashville by like quite a bit even now, but I think that's not where we're going. But I think nurses, I think when we're looking at the nurse rates, we are now on par. And I know that that's something that we have to keep an eye on because nursing, I understand, has been very, very, very competitive to get substitute nurses, to the point where they're even using paramedics as school nurses in some schools.
Could I add one thing to that? If you want to subcontract out with an agency for a nurse, it has been at least $450 a day for a very long time.
Yeah. So that's, you know, if we can do something to protect ourselves there, that's actually data that makes me want to increase it a little bit to maybe two and a quarter. But I just think, you know, again, what we did with these adjustments, and thank you, Melissa, for doing those, is it put us at par. And I think if we're having a struggle, everyone's struggling, we need to be above par. I don't think we need to be, again, at Amherst in some of those numbers. But we definitely have to be above the pool. So I would go a little above the pool in each of those. So I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are, but I think we need to be a little more, a little bit of an edge so we don't fall behind.
Jenna?
I agree, Shannon, actually, because I'm in a building in an elementary school every day and I'm seeing the holes. And I think what, what happens when we do this is we retain really good substitutes. And they want to substitute in our district, and especially the building-based floating substitute. In this COVID situation we're in, those substitutes and these consistent substitutes coming into the same buildings every day are critical. Because when teachers are then out for five or, you know, before the rules change 10 days because they contracted COVID, to have these familiar faces coming in is, especially, I mean, it's at any grade level, but especially with the younger kids, is absolutely critical because everything feels so topsy-turvy. And to have a teacher come in that knows the building, that knows the curriculum because they've been in there and they're teaching it in various classrooms. We need to pay these people the value of what they, the service they give us. And it's huge, it's huge, because the consistency there is absolutely critical. And you think about it in a, in even, in even the high school. You know, we're approaching midterms. If a teacher goes out with COVID, to get a teacher that is familiar with the high school and might be able to actually teach some math or review some math for the kids or even facilitate some sort of a math, it's just so huge. And as someone who, before I got my job, looked at the subrates in Merrimack, I would consider myself, I was school board, I was before I got my job, a school board member in Merrimack, obviously highly motivated to be in Merrimack, thinking about getting a substituting job. And then I looked at the pay rate in Amherst and I thought, oh, boy, that school's just as close to me as the other one. And then I thought, oh, no, 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 obviously I have to do it in Merrimack. But I could have made literally 250 extra dollars a week just going one town over. And we want to prevent that from happening. I mean, obviously, there's going to be people who want to be invested in Merrimack because it's their town. But I'm fully in support of this.
Yeah.
Shannon?
And I found my other point, and that's the building-based floater. I think we need to move that to 150.
Oh, totally.
I was going to bring that up, the building base.
Yeah.
I would like to see one per building of even, you know, like a sub per building that's just like a full-time employee that has flexibility and, you know, could jump into other areas, other buildings if they had to. But maybe that's a story, maybe that's a topic for another day.
I would agree with you. That's something that's employed in the building where I work and it's, it's a game changer. It's a game changer, especially if you have one in each building, minimum of one in each building. And then maybe we have two floating district subs who are, you know, full-time. You know, some of those people may not even need benefits. You know, who knows? It's, I don't know how it all works, HR-wise. That has to be figured out by somebody else. But that would shore us up on a level that is really critical right now. Again, conversation for another time, maybe.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, I think what you're hearing is there's a lot of support to, you know, from the board is what I'm hearing, to provide, you know, resources that are needed for our district. And I guess, you know, what I would say is, you know, Melissa went through a lot of work, working with administration to put this in front of us. And if anything, I would be inclined, in areas where you feel the district might need more money, that we provide a range so that she doesn't have to come back again. You know, if she feels that she can, you know, work with what's been proposed, then I'd like her to work with what's been proposed. But if she feels she needs more, then in those, you know, areas, we could provide a range. And that might give some flexibility just to ensure that, you know, we have.
That would be helpful. And I appreciate the support for even a higher rate for the day-to-day subs and also the school nurses.
Lori?
So I agree that, you know, with the subpay, I like your proposal. Again, the only thing I would say is, and I talk about this a lot, is just as we move forward, looking at the resources we currently have in our schools and looking at class sizes and looking at numbers of sections and understanding that we're at a critical shortage, just not in the state of New Hampshire, but nationally. And how can we, going back to what they're saying, you know, use our resources to the best of our ability? And in some places, like I said a couple weeks ago, we actually may want to talk about lower class sizes, you know. And so I agree and I just talk about resources in the future.
Jenna?
I just want to make one last point while we're talking about substitutes and while we're talking about investing in them financially. Again, speaking as a certified teacher who was a stay-at-home mom for a long time, let my certification lapse, one of the creative things I think we can do is, there's people like me out there. There's people that are getting to the point where they're like, I would like to maybe go back to education. And, but they need to maybe redo their certification. If we can invest in our substitutes in a way that shows them how valuable they are to us and gives them another resource. For example, including them in our, you know, maybe in our summer institutes or training them in our curriculum. If you're offering a math training for new teachers at the beginning of the year, invite substitutes. Allow them, especially ones that are dedicated to our building, but also, also ones that just work a lot in our, in our district, to come. I would have been somebody who would have absolutely taken advantage of that because I could have then used that as professional development, you know, that didn't cost me any money, which is a huge deal, right? I could have used that to help get my certification back. But meanwhile, you're investing in them and you're training them in the curriculum, which only makes them more valuable and more invested in our district. And we all know that the fantastic subs become our next teachers often. And so that is something I would really like to see happening, always involving our substitutes, making them feel like they're a valued part of our staff, even though they may not be full-time staff. I know just as I'm in this elementary school environment every day, I know these substitutes, I see them. They feel like part of the staff to me right now, especially since they're literally there every day. You know what I mean? So I'd like to see the investment in them, not just be financial, but also in other meaningful ways that express our value, the value that they offer to our district and that we're so grateful for.
I mean, I think right now we do have this on the table. I don't know if someone wants to make a motion. Shannon?
I was going to ask if you wanted to. So I would say, I'm going to make this motion with apprehension because I think that we definitely, I mean, we could tear this thing up. And not that she didn't basically give us a competitive analysis, but what she didn't, she gave us is other schools, which is, of course, what we know. And some of these rates were competing with Starbucks. I mean, so I look at that, too. So I think that I would like to do this as a Band-Aid, but I'd like to come back and look at our long-term strategy to recruit and retain temp employee structure, just the way we try to do our permanent. So with that, I will make a motion. I move that we accept the proposed substitute pay scale for the balance of 21, 22 with the following adjustments. A full day for substitutes will be paid at 125, a half-day at 6250. I did like a little on the side math. A floater, a building-based floating substitute would be paid 150, and a nurse 250.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Jenna?
Yep.
Anyone else want to speak to it?
Okay, I do. I mean, I would, I would be much more comfortable voting for it if we gave the range of up to 125 a day, up to 225 for the nurses, just to not override it. If I'd like to, if she thinks she can work with those numbers, she did the analysis, I don't want to just override it. That's, that's just my reservation, that. I mean, I'm perfectly on board with being competitive and, you know, wanting to offer. But, you know, I'd like to give her that range and she may very well say, all right, then, you know, let's work with those, those higher numbers. That would give us an edge up. But I, I don't want to necessarily override what she put together. That's what I'm grappling with.
And I hesitate because I think this is, again, my motion's a Band-Aid. What I think we need to do, and just like we do with any employee, that would not necessarily be like a contracted employee the way we have throughout our district, you basically look at the number of hours they work, how they perform, all those things. And then people get raises. So even Starbucks, you've been there six months, you get an evaluation, you get a raise. You put so many hours in, you get a raise. So I think, you know, this Band-Aid is to get through the rest of the year. But I think that there's a long-term strategy that needs, that would benefit the district to say, if you're a substitute and you've been here, you know, you've been coming and you've been a substitute for us for three years, you're not getting paid the been a substitute for us for three years, you're not getting paid the same as the one that's been here, you know, a day. So I think that, I think there's work to be done. This is my Band-Aid motion. And I'd rather keep it steady so she can recruit and attract, but then come back to us with what I would call long-term, like a long-term stabilization plan to get those, those fill-in roles that, at a rate that people would want to come back year after year. Because again, we know those substitutes, our kids look at those as almost extensions of their teaching staff. When you see them like, you know, once a month, you know, they covered this teacher and then they covered my art teacher another time, they get to know them. You know, not quite as well as their own teacher, but, but they become a member of the school community even though they're not fully contracted as an employee.
Yeah, Bill?
May I just say, I understand your idea, your proposal. I do think at this point in time, based on the discussion and just, just thinking through the competitiveness of the market, I think it's better for us to stick with a specific number. And then once we come back with the longer-term plan, maybe we can reconsider and revisit the idea of a range.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, if we look at it as a temporary-
This is my, I front-loaded it as a Band-Aid, so.
I just wanted to talk through my thoughts.
Sure, absolutely.
So thank you for allowing me that opportunity, but I'll support it. I just, you know, wanted, it was kind of grappling, you know, with that concept. So, all right. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that's five zero zero.
Thank you very much. Just, I think this is a very important step to allowing us to attract more people.
You are welcome. Next, new business, other, any other new business that we want to bring up? Seeing none. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, I'll accept a motion to accept the November 18th and January 11th non-public minutes made by Shannon. Do I have a second? Lori Peters. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, that's five zero zero. Next would be the January 3rd, 2022, public minutes. Do I have a motion? Shannon, second. Lori Rothaus. Any other changes or updates to those minutes? I think I have one. I do. The January 3rd. On page three of nine, there was a discussion, a new business discussion. And it had to do with the capital improvement plan. And in our conversation, we talked about this for quite a while and I don't know that I feel the notes adequately quite reflect the breadth of that discussion, specifically just around one item, I think, is regarding putting that Thornton Sperry roof in a warrant article. And one of the key points that I think that we discussed was that a warrant article would also offer some transparency to the public. And, you know, understanding that we were in a rock and a hard place, that, you know, there may be additional, the ability to explain it in the voter's guide and whatnot to add that transparency. And I, you know, in skimming through the notes, I just didn't see the spirit of that discussion. So I guess I would just ask that, there's just, you know, if this could just be listened to again and maybe add a little more body around it. Shannon?
I do find, this is the one that had two corrections on.
Okay, go ahead.
So on line 22 and line 30, they have Ms. Chair Barnes and I retired two years ago from that. So Board Member Barnes will be fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other updates to those minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that's five zero zero. Next up would be the January 4th minutes. Do I have a motion? Shannon, second. Lori Peters. Any comments or edits? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that's five zero zero. The consent agenda.
Thank you very much. We have two one-year-only positions to be put forward. The first one is Mitchell Bull and he would be a one-year language arts teacher at the Merrimack Middle School. And the other is Elise Kamitski and she would be a one-year special education teacher at Master Cola Elementary School.
Do I have a motion? Made by Shannon, a second. Jenna? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, five zero zero. Thank you, Kim. Other committee reports? Are there any committee reports? None? Correspondence? There was one correspondence that the board received, I believe a Merrimack citizen just expressing concerns around CRT. I did get a couple that had to do with masking or not masking. But anybody else have any other correspondence? No. Comments? Any comments from the board? Seeing none. And now we are on the public comments on agenda items. We still have an empty room here at the high school. Shannon, do we have any additional?
We have a few.
Okay.
We will start with Cindy Parenti, Shady Lane. I want, I want to thank the board members for the incredible amount of time and professionalism they give to our town. I'm writing in support of our mask policy. Thank you for your consistency in trying to keep our students, teachers, staff and community safe and healthy. Cindy Parenti. Rebecca Stats, 11 Bradford Drive, and she actually sent a follow-on, so I'm going to read them together because I think that was the intent, so I will just do that for the sake of fluidity. So Becky Stats, 11 Bradford Drive. Let's drop the masks, please. Masks do not make a difference in transmission and neither do vaccines. Many places in Europe have now recognized that masks produce measurable IQ and social deficits in children and therefore have dropped them. At this point, we are doing more harm than good in instilling fear in our children. Let's give our children the gift of their childhood back, please. COVID is endemic, it will never be leaving. Time to forsweer fear tactics and get back to living. And we will go on, addendum. Forgive my forgetfulness, but with all due respect, statistics and numbers used in these meetings should only be those which pertain to the town of Merrimack. 3,000 cases for the day is pertinent to the state, not to our schools and town, or town. Of approximately 12,000 residents, if we had a new infection rate of 3,000 per day, that would be cause for panic and health and safety considerations. Thank God we are not there. Let's compare apples to apples, please. Thank you, Becky Stats. Jamie Gibson, Island Drive. Hello, I'm going to try to keep this short before you make any major decision. Please consider that we're coming up to the two-year mark on COVID and we need to move from trying to quote, "prevent exposure" to quote, "living with it." There's vaccines for all school-aged children if parents deem it necessary, boosters, masks, delivery service and even a free charter school in town requiring masks on those children. With all these options for someone to feel safe, Merrimack Public Schools should compromise and leave it up to the parents. It's no longer a preventing situation, we just need to live with it. With that said, it's time to move past all these mandates and move forward to bringing our community together in a positive way. The only way we can do that is compromise. The compromise of letting people slash parents live how they want to live. Please consider moving any type of mandate and leave it up to the parents, the ones who know their children, their child, their own child best. Thank you, Jamie Gibson. Next is Jennifer Jobin, Mary Meeting Drive. Dear school board members, I'm concerned with the way that parents were chosen for the task force. With such an important mission, it may have been a better choice to have this made public so that interested parents with diverse backgrounds could have applied. Thank you, Jennifer Jobin. And Karen Brown, Four Winds Road. Dear members of the school board, thank you for continuing to serve our community. It has been an informative watching recent school board meetings as you discuss the 2022, 2023 district budget. For anyone watching or attending, it has become clear that Thornton Sperry urgently needs a new roof. I fully support increasing the rate of pay for substitute teachers, paraeducators and nurses. Taking a creative approach is critical in attracting and retaining subs for the remainder of the school year and beyond. School districts in other areas have created an innovative approach, innovative approach to staff their schools during the Omicron surge. These districts offer a premium for midterm substitutes. Midterm subs commit to working four or five consecutive days. In return, they receive a rate between the day rate and the long-term rate. It creates continuity for the children in the event their teacher, specialist or paraeducator is in quarantine. It also lessens the pressure on school district personnel by streamlining the process. One substitute is easier to find and manage than four or five. Respectfully, Karen Brown. Just do a refresh and we are caught up.
Thank you, Shannon. And now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Shannon, second by Jenna. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, five zero zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.